He is good with it.
Good evening. This is the meeting of the Public Board of Speakers for Monday, March 11, 2019. And we will open our meetings in no less than. Jane Carroll?
Yes, sir.
Would you leave me a message?
My allegiance to the right from the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do you have the agenda before you? Is there any modification or motion to improve the regular agenda? And it's moved by Michael Fiorella, seconded by Beth Holton-Fulley. Those who favor Speaker Green give us an eye.
Aye.
That's opposed. National Carriage unanimously as to consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. Is there any modification or is there a motion to improve consent agenda?
I think we should make a consent agenda with the modifications to the minutes that was provided on our desk.
Okay. Moved by Michael Fiorella, seconded by Beth Holton-Fulley. Those who favor Speaker Green give us an eye.
Aye.
That's opposed. National Carriage unanimously. This is a time for citizens' matters with respect to public expression speakers. And we are in the same position that we were in last meeting. We have slightly fewer people signed up this time. There are 10 people signed up. And so, as the boards, I have in the past, there are -- I don't believe that there are speakers on the issues that are on the agenda tonight. So, we don't need approval for that. You have three minutes. There's a maximum of a half hour. Last time, we took the first hour of the meeting for public expression speakers. And I think that this time, we'll still give three minutes, but we'll have an overall cap of 30 minutes for public expression speakers. The first person is John Clark. John Clark, on Cumberland Road. Thanks, John. If you'll come forward and state your name, address, and those, what yours is.
I'm John Clark. I live at 212 Cumberland Road, just down south. It's actually a Sanford family address, but it is in Chatham County. I'm a member of the North Carolina Native Plant Society. And we have formed partnership with the Chatham Park developers on plant rescues. So, we go out and rescue native plants before construction equipment goes in to do the road work or any construction work on site. What we do with those plants is we donate them to North Carolina Museum of Art as a restoration project they're doing now. Last year, we gave them a little over 1,000 plants for that restoration work. We're also working with the Botanical Garden up in Chapel Hill, the Saratoga Gardens in Raleigh, and Bog Garden in Greensboro. We take a group of folks out, and we'll find native plants. We're all about natives. I've got the shirt that says "I'm all about natives." And we'll take those native plants out, dig them with some dirt, and rescue them and plant them either at one of those sites or some members take them home and plant them in their own gardens. One of the reasons we like native plants is they support the wildlife, the pollinators, birds, and everything arriving in our environment depends on native plants. So, Chatham Park has been gracious enough to allow us to have access to the sites. And I coordinate closely with our representative on where we go, when we go. And we go pretty much all year round. When it's thundering down, rain, we stay home. And when it's 30 degrees out, we stay home because the plants don't transplant well. Or if it's 120 degrees, they don't transplant well. But we typically are out there every weekend digging up plants. There's 10 or 12 of us on a normal weekend to go out and rescue plants. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that the Chatham Park developer has given us this opportunity to rescue plants and move them rather than, as some do, avoid giving them permission and just bulldoze them into the ground. And we find orchids quite frequently. We find thousands and thousands of terns. We probably rescued 5,000 terns. And there's still many more than that out there. And we get anything from miniscule plant this big to trees. We get buckeye. I don't know if you're familiar with the buckeye, but a very pretty flowering tree, shrub. We rescue those. And those go in gardens. We put some up at the Museum of Art. Haven't given any to the Chapel Hill folks yet, but they're coming down. We're going to get some rescued scheduled here in the next few weeks. Our peak season is about now, so we're going to really start getting busy. We'll probably be out some weeks, three or four days a week. If there's construction work going in a place that's viable for us to go rescue plants, we'll gather up real quickly and do multiple days in a row. We haven't found trillium yet on this rescue, but there was one site, the Randallton Dam site, where our folks went in and they rescued -- there were estimates of 10,000 trillium, which is an endangered and rare species. And when you find it in those numbers, and there was no way to stop the project, so these folks went out ahead of the bulldozers, and they were literally digging them out of the ground and putting them in trash bags and taking them home. You know, I've got a friend who's got 5,000 in his front yard. So, it's pretty amazing this time of year to see those because they'll start flowering here shortly. And they've got deep burgundy's and yellows and whites. So, I just -- I think it's important that we form a partnership like this. The Native Plant Society does this across the state with developers. Some developers like to do it, others don't. The North Carolina Department of Transportation doesn't want us to go in because they're afraid we're going to find something. If we find a rare and endangered plant, that might cause them problems. They know there are rare and endangered plants on one of their sites. And they said, "We don't want you there because you might find something else that will slow us down even further." So, we just appreciate the fact that Chatham Park has given us this opportunity. Just wanted to say that in a firm report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, I have one question. What size trees are you transplanting? Any trees, saplings, or anything? Move any of those?
As big as I can carry. That's basically, if I can dig it out of the ground and carry it out. I use an Ikea, a blue Ikea bag because it's resistant to bramble, the green rye or the blackberries. If I can get it in that and carry it out, or put it on a cart or sled and pull it out. We haven't taken anything more than about -- probably the largest we take is about a seven-foot tree. But you've got to get those at the right time of the year. Can't transplant a tree like that in the summer. It just has to stray away. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Maggie France.
Hi. My name is Maggie France, and I live at 1079 Bynum Road in Bynum. I'm a beekeeper, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the trees and the reasons why we should maintain as many of the existing trees in Chatham Park as possible. I'm a member of the Chatham County Beekeepers Association, which is one of the largest chapters in the state. You've all heard about colony collapse disorder, the continual decrease in the bee populations. While there are many reasons for this, a crucial one is the loss of their foraging habitat. These collect pollen and nectar from mature trees. They must visit 2 million flowers and fly 55,000 miles to make one pound of honey. Therefore, you can understand why mature trees are needed and should be protected. They gather nectar and pollen when mature trees bloom, mostly about this time of the year. Pollen provides the protein needed to raise their young. Mature trees such as tulip poplar, sour wood, maple, and oak trees are great sources of nectar and pollen in our area. As the master gardener and friend of pollinators, trees are also key to providing food for birds, bats, and other pollinators. As an example, bluebirds must feed one nest of babies, 6,000 to 9,000 caterpillars before they leave their nest. Not last my place. Trees are hosts for caterpillars. Oak trees are the host for the most caterpillar species. Given the numbers of flowers and insects needed by the birds and the bees, it's clear that maintaining as many mature trees in the 7,000 acres of Chatham Park is critical to the health of creatures large and small. I urge you to require a developer to save as many mature trees as possible. Cutting and replanting is not an option for the environmental health of this area. My last point concerns counting trees. I saw mention that an individual tree could be counted more than once. I don't care if you use new math or old math or Boolean algebra. Counting a tree more than once to meet coverage requirements is wrong. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Peter's there. Peter?
Brian? Your team. Here's a video I took on the 23rd of February. No video or no audio, please. And you can just start watching it. This is taken right across from Northwood where Mosaic is being built. Is it planted? Brian? Zoom, zoom, zoom. And I don't know if you can see it, but there's raw, untreated water flowing out of this culvert that's draining a ditch, and it's been flowing for days. And I just thought I'd start with that. Good evening. My name's Peter Thye. I live at 1065 Boothill Road in northern Chatham. Now, even though it's Chapel Hill, I'm in Chatham. I'm here tonight to request the town board to require Chatham Park to allow the Hall River Assembly to monitor their construction activities that impact surface water, surface water, efferments, streams, and rivers. I've been monitoring construction sites in Chatham for 20 years. 20 years. Before Chatham had a settlementation erosion control officer, I would share my observations with Division of North Carolina, NCDWQ, sorry, and our county commissioners regularly. This is back in the day. My repeated reports prompted Margaret Pollard wants to thank me for keeping sedimentation and erosion control issues caused by developers on the Chatham County Board of Commissioners radar. I was -- we'd go every -- we'd go every -- we'd go months and months and months, the same people talking about these same problems. And finally, whatever. Sorry, I missed my remarks. My reporting to NCDWQ facilitated numerous notices of violation in West Wall, Chatham Downs, and other subdivisions. And since Chatham County has had a water protection development -- water protection department, my shared observations are responded with, "Thanks for the heads up," or "We will get back out there," or even "We already know about it." And also, notice of violations. Developers have to be watched. Developers, I'm talking about Chatham Park has to be watched, reminded, taught to do the right thing. And only constant vigilant monitoring will help our water. It's ridiculous for you guys to think that you can trust Chatham Park to do anything unless you regulate them. You have to regulate them. They have to meet standards. In 2014, I spoke to Tom DiAlexandra, whatever his name was. He was working for Preston Development at the time. He assured me that there would be no negative impact to surface water from development in Chatham Park. Well, I didn't call him a liar, but it's not true. There's already been damage, and there's about to get a lot worse. Please help Chatham Park protect our waters with the Hall River Assembly's assistance. It's so important. You have to. You serve these people and protect us. Do your job. Protect the public's interest. Please. I mean, I'm 65. I'm tired. And you guys need to do a better -- you've got to stand up. Margaret Pollard thanked me for helping. We need to protect our water.
Thank you, Peter. The next person to sign up is Joy Hewitt. Joy, you asked if you could switch with Elaine Kessel. Yes.
Good evening. I'm here. I'm here to present you with the petition we've been collecting for less than 10 days, I guess, that's been signed by 1,449 people. And I'm going to pass them out to you. And I thought it would probably be appropriate to give the original to the clerk. So, these 1,449, we actually had 1,450, but someone mistakenly signed twice, so we took that one off. These signatures come from people who live in the town of Pittsburgh, in the ETJ, in Chatham County, and even beyond, but mostly here around Pittsburgh, who all care about Pittsburgh's future. And these decisions that you're making about trees and water are of concern to so many people in and outside of the town limits and people thinking about future generations. So, we hope you listen to their voices as you discuss the Chatham Park Tree Protection Additional Element. And I hope you listen, as you continue to discuss with the state, their concern that Chatham Park is going to need to do more to protect the Hall River and Jordan Lake as it is built. There's still signatures coming in, and we'll send some more along to you as we get them. Thank you. Oh, I didn't read the petition. That's true. Sorry, 1,449. And yes, the petition says, "By adding my name below, I hereby ask the town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners to require Chatham Park to preserve more of the existing trees on the 7,000-plus acres of forested land they will develop. Tree coverage requirements of 0%, 10%, or 20% will not make Chatham Park an exemplary development. We ask that Chatham Park be required to protect the Hall River and Jordan Lake with larger forested stream buffers and less development and land disturbance near the river and the lower Hall River State Natural Area." Thanks. I guess I should have led with that.
Next person signed up is Ed Fowler.
Hello again. I'm Ed Fowler from Potterstone Village, 86th and Stone Drive. We've got a number of people from Potterstone Village today. Just wanted to let the board know and the Planning Commission that we are starting efforts. We've had about two weekends to gather a petition. This one more specific than the one that came out to the Board of Commissioners about May, June of last year against, you know, the concrete batch plant that has been, this time, presented, and they have applied for whatever the issue is. They've submitted an application at this point. I'm hoping that there's enough time to get the remaining petition signed off on by the next meeting on the 25th. And I would just, in a form of a question, I wanted to ask the board and anybody here from the Planning Commission if we do have enough time before this goes up for vote, for that to happen. Otherwise, I would present what we have today.
The planning director is not here tonight, so...
I know Victoria was here earlier. She left. I think I scared her away. I'm sorry.
I know it's still under review, but I don't remember what meeting it's targeted towards, so...
Will you be able to communicate that to Mr. Fowler?
Yeah. And then, Mayor, respectfully, I wanted to let you know, the last time, you know, I got the advice to get in touch with Jeff Jones and the Planning Board, and my phone calls have gone unresponded to. I was a little bit upset that we wanted to get in front, get an opportunity to speak, and the meeting on the 4th was canceled because there was nothing to discuss, even though a number of phone calls went in before that, a couple of emails to the Planning Board about us wanting to present. So, I was hearing earlier from Vicky that I don't even know if that's -- it's not sounding like we can get time. So, I'm a little bit confused as to which direction I'm going with this. Who do we present our case to more solidly or in what order is one of the questions. In the meantime, because I know we're running short on time, Jim, did you already hand out the one aspect that I wanted to share, which is an EPA finding on the impact of health and environmental effects of cement plant emissions? When you do get the eventual petition, we cite things as negative impact and resale value, health issues, quality of life, noise issues, environmental impact, water source impact. I want to hook up with the people from the Hall River Assembly to analyze how they're going to get access to the water, which I understand is something that the commission will vote on, giving them access to a specific cap that wasn't available to them the first time they came around. So, I just want to read this very quickly because I know we have a neighbor who lives right within 100 yards of where this plant will be, and her husband has a lung transplant. And some of the impacts of a cement plant emission per the EPA, nitrogen oxide can cause a variety of health and adverse environmental impacts, such as ground-level ozone, acid range overwhelming water quality deterioration, visual impairment. Affected populations include children, people with lung diseases such as asthma, and exposure to these conditions can cause damage to lung tissue for people who work or exercise or spend some time maybe in the backyard once in a while, if they could. Sulfur dioxide, pretty much the same thing with the effect on breathing, may aggravate existing respiratory and cardiovascular disease. Sensitive populations include asthmatics, of course, anybody, children. We're talking about the children here. I had a seven-year-old come around with the grandmother for the petition, and she said to me, "I'm going to have her come ask the same question to the board. Why would anyone put a coffee plant in my grandmother's backyard, right on the other side of my creek with all the water flowing through the neighborhood?"
Ed Fowler, you timed this up, but we see the third thing that you have been reading. I don't take appropriate note of that. Thank you.
Okay. And advice on the planning thing?
She's an engineering...
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. We'll be back.
The next would be Joy Hewitt. Joy, I would swap your position with Elaine.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Joy Hewitt, 3069 Silk Hope, Gum Springs Road, Pittsburgh. Chatham Park has been telling the media they will have 50% tree canopy in their development. Where's the evidence? Are they counting undeveloped forest areas to make up for the low tree coverage required? Will the undeveloped forests be permanently protected under the rules of the tree protection element? Is there a tree coverage to tree canopy ratio to justify their claims of 50%? How long will it take newly planted saplings to mature to canopy size? Written numbers in their documents should be required rather than verbal statements made to the media. In the tree protection element drafts they provide you, they use language like tree coverage area and tree planting protection area. But where and how many existing trees will they protect? The language for protecting trees needs to be simple and straightforward, clear, honest, legally binding, and enforceable. Chatham Park says they'll be the best environmental community around, but just across the river, Chatham County requires a low density of one house per five acres within 2,500 feet of the river. Pittsburgh's land use plan has a 2,000-foot forest buffer along the Hall River, providing a natural conservation area for eagles, herons, osprey, songbirds, and migrating warblers to have sufficient tree canopy and distance from development. The natural buffer will provide a wildlife corridor and mitigate flooding and pollution. The beauty of this contiguous tree canopy will be an asset to Chatham Park and its home buyers, as well as to hikers and paddlers enjoying the lower Hall River State Natural Area. I quote from a 2014 memo by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Roughly 76% of the section of Chatham Park north of US 64 Bypass is considered by the state to be a significant natural heritage area. Wooden saving a 2,000-foot buffer proves they are serious about environmental protection. Shouldn't the rights of future generations need for fresh air, clean water, and pure undisturbed nature be considered? The town gave Chatham Park developers greater profitability by allowing greater density on this land and the watershed. Chatham Park should protect more trees in each area of development, since the community as a whole must share those common natural resources. Can you require Chatham Park's tree protection plan additional element to identify and save more existing trees? I'll leave you with these quotes in a recent Our Chatham article. David Haskell, a Pulitzer Prize finalist and professor of biology and environmental studies at University of the South, describes another way that trees can affect climate and the way they change the temperature around them. Trees change the weather in a city. They have a significant cooling effect. They save a lot of air conditioning, Haskell said. An NC State project titled Trees of Strength goes further into this. The evaporation from a single tree can produce the cooling effect of 10 room-sized air conditioners operating 20 hours a day. Chatham Park should be required to build for the future, where trees will be needed even more than they are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Snit? Pam Snit, next.
Hi. I'm Pam Snit, and I've got business in Pittsburgh. I've retired 40 years in business. And I trust everyone that's sitting up there. I'm so glad that you love Pittsburgh and Chatham County as much as I do. I'm going to come from a business point of view. I think in order to be successful, you have to give more than you take. And we can do that. It might take a little more backpocket money, but we have more to think about than right now. And that is our future, our children, our children's children, nieces, nephews. We owe it to them. What decisions we make now will -- they're dependent on us to make the right decision. Chatham Park is not our enemy. They are here, and we have to embrace them and trust that they love this area as much as we do and that they want to work with us and not against us. But again, the decisions we make now are going to affect us forever. I hope that we can come together and we can embrace. We've got some of the smartest people here that have been working on the river longer than some of you here have been born. And I would love to see them to come together, you come together. We can make a huge change. We can be a calling card. We can be a destination. People will want to come here because we do care. So, I hope that tonight, everybody will think beyond the decisions that have to be made, that think beyond our back pocket, that treasure the natural resources that we have because once they're gone, they are gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Eze Clifford?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was just a sign and sheet. I don't have any other. I thought you were sending us...
Amanda Robinson, next.
Can I move that to the floor a little bit? I'll get it.
Thank you.
Can I attempt to get copies of these for all of you? I have the others on order. So, um, can you do some of that?
Thank you. I'm Amanda Robertson. I live at 244 Prince Creek here in Pittsburgh. So, it is much worse than any of you think, than any of us think. We're currently in, according to many scientists, the sixth mass extinction. The five before us still completely wiped out any evidence of the fossil record that they served as an evolutionary reset. 450 million years ago, 86% of all species were gone. 70 million years ago, 75%. 125 million years ago, 96% of all species were wiped out. 50 million years later, 80%. 136 million years later, 75% all wiped out. We're in the sixth one. All but one of these events involved an asteroid obliterating the dinosaurs. The rest involved climate change. The most notorious was 250 million years ago. It began when carbon dioxide warmed the planet by five degrees Celsius, accelerated when that warming triggered the release of methane, another greenhouse gas, and ended with all but a sliver of life dead on Earth. This is a quote from David Wallace Wells' book, The Uninhabitable Earth, and I will get copies for the rest of you. We are currently adding carbon to the atmosphere at least 10 times faster than this most recent mass extinction. 10 times faster and 100 times faster than at any point in human history. 100 times faster since human beings walked the Earth. In addition, we are adding methane to the atmosphere so fast now due to our increased use of frac gas, the one that Duke Energy wants us to start using most of all because they consider it a bridge fuel, that scientists cannot keep up with their projections. Three years ago, four years ago, when I first stood before this board and talked about climate change, it was not this scary. It has gotten so scary. This has changed so fast. I didn't think then that I was gonna see this. I thought this was a problem for my grandchildren. We will all see this. We will see how bad it is gonna get in our lifetimes. That's how fast methane and frac gas use has increased this. It is going so much faster. It is happening so much faster and it is so much worse than anyone ever believed. And if we continue to do nothing, it will be uninhabitable in the United States anywhere west of the Rockies. That will be the hottest place on Earth, on the planet, hotter than anywhere in the Middle East, hotter than India. This is how they see this transforming. And I-95 will be underwater. This, this is really what we're looking at. We have to move fast. We must do everything we can, everything all of us can do, everybody, every single person can do to stop global warming in its tracks. We have to stop now. We cannot ignore this any further. This means stopping all use of fossil fuels. And as hard as that sounds, that's not all. We have to do that right now, right now, all of us, right now. Many scientists say we have four years, five maybe, and some say we don't have any time, that it's too late. But that won't be enough. In addition to stopping all fossil fuel use, we have to use all the technologies we have available to start extracting carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. And another thing we can do is trees. Trees are one of the single best sequesters of carbon dioxide on the planet that we have, one of the best. And you are all looking, you're right now looking at 7,000 acres, and how do we plan for that? That is one of the best choices we have, is to sit down and figure out, how do we do this? What do we do as a commission, as a body? I think one of the things I would do is I would ranny up these expectations we have of Chatham Park with trees, and then I would double whatever they feel they need to take. If they need to take 50% of the trees out of Chatham Park to get their development in, ask them to, require them to plant twice as many, twice as many somewhere else as offsets, because we can't take trees out. We cannot afford to do any more damage. We need to move in the opposite direction.
Amanda, I'm sorry, but your time is up. And thank you for speaking and we have the, your, your next.
Thank you. The, the bottom is the list that I'm sure most of you have heard from other people anyway. Thank you.
Thanks. Our last speaker is Chris. He's going. Thank you, Chris.
Hi, my name is Kristy Divana. I live at 573 Chatham Forest Drive in the Chatham Forest Neighborhood. I need help with speed bumps for the neighborhood. I was recently elected to the homeowners association there. We have issues with people cutting through and using Springdale and they go down Chapel, Fox Chapel and cut onto Chatham Forest and sometimes they're not stopping at the stop sign there. And sometimes they're going so fast when the neighbors in the neighborhood say something to them, people are flipping them off. And we don't want it to get to the point where there's a fatality or somebody's pet or child gets hit. So, I just want some guidance on how we get the ball rolling with having the town approve and hopefully pay for speed bumps. That's it.
Mr. Chris, who would you suggest that Chris meet with?
I had provided a policy, a proposed policy to the board probably three years ago, suggested that the board take a look at it from, from both a numbers standpoint, in terms of whether or not there's speed warranted, some sort of traffic control device, and as well as a process for how to actually pay for it, which didn't include the town actually paying for it, since the town doesn't receive a direct benefit from it. So, we can either revisit that policy, or I can just simply start anew based on policies from other communities like they did at Rockland.
We'll put it into the process and, and look forward to working to a resolution.
Who, who should I follow up with? Because we've had about 80% of the board turnover in that time period and.
You can follow up with me, but it's gonna be kind of an uphill battle.
Ryan Chrisbeck, the town manager.
Okay, thank you.
Because I think we do need to look at this, because I think this is gonna come up in power like all of.
I'd recommend handling it the same way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would appreciate if you could recirculate more of your, your words for you to.
Mayor Cortez Baldwin just suggested that the chief of police might be instrumental in helping us flesh out the solutions here based on what you're observing in the communities that we're talking about.
I'd be happy to call my patrol supervisor. But do know that we've, we've had some issues with posted speeds in that area. The homeowners association a while back decided to erect their own speed limit sign, which was not posted speed limit. And we can only enforce posted speed limits. And so, I think we've corrected that in the past few years. And obviously, you know, what they're observing, I'm not saying it's not happened, but we do put officers throughout areas. We get complaints in town and we react to what we see, but we can't be everywhere.
As long as we're discussing it, there has to be a valid reason, a valid speed-based scientific reason to show that speed bumps will actually reduce speeds. And so far, there isn't any data out there to suggest that.
There might be something else that speed bumps do that we could look at, four-way stop signs, things like that.
Four-way stop signs are even more dangerous.
All right, then, let's proceed next to the manager reports. Ryan Chrisbeck, we have your, and here you go, please stand to give us updates on your issues.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I, I'm sure you can tell that the demolition process at the town hall site has been going pretty well. We now have, there's a couple of pictures here, which I don't think, I think our, our ex-mal even dated as we speak. This one right here is, I think, after the first or second day, when they were just kind of carrying into the front part of the structure. Within probably a week and a half, the entire structure was down and they were into, the demolition company was into removing the flooring and then the contractor that was hired specifically for the asbestos was able to do that. Kind of see some of that, some of that process down here. This material right here, which you can't, can't see quite as well, is actually, there was quite a bit of carpet. There's quite a bit of carpet that was actually taken from the site. And right here, and there's actually more piles of it than that. And I believe that also had some asbestos material on it. So, some of the bags and the dumpsters, you saw, had bags, were specially locked in, had asbestos material. Like I said, knocking on wood, it appears as if we're out of that. The well retaining walls, this picture maybe doesn't show it as well, and I've got some other ones that show it better, but the well retaining walls along the Haynes Street portion are going to be left up in order to, most of it will be left up, I believe, in order to help support the retaining wall that's along this side, at least in turn, at least until construction begins. Retaining wall on the far side, I guess along the side that runs parallel to Salisbury's, is gonna be left in place. So, the flooring you see out there today, I think most of it is, is gone. It's gonna be exposed dirt and gravel here shortly. And knocking on wood, I think the project to this point in time is gonna be under the budgeted amount, which was under the amount that we had originally budgeted, if that makes any sense. So, knocking on wood, again, cost-wise, I think things are progressing fairly well.
Ryan, my lay observation is that the two slabs were coming apart pretty easily, where we thought asbestos was and where the additional cost to the project is. So, I know we had a number of 178. If it was really problematic, or 133, if it was easy.
It's down to 133, but I'm, I was reluctant.
I know. I'm, yeah, we're headed in the right direction.
A few other items. Park design, you recall a few meetings ago, we indicated that, you know, revisited the budgeted issue of redesigning, redesigning the park facility on Rectory and Salisbury Street. I thought I had, I thought I had extra diagrams on the slide, so I apologize. But you recall where that is? It's kind of near the Hobbs, Hobbs Architects offices. So, there, there will be an RFQ on that as well as an RFQ that's been completed, or there's not an RFQ, excuse me, completed on that. We'll be looking at contracts for that. We'll also be looking at a contract to design the Kiwanis Park facility expansion. And that is the area that's by Kiwanis Building that's on site. And so, I'm looking forward to presenting some good information on that here soon. The Parks Master Plan is included with your packet this evening. It's a binder, not a binder, it's a filed accounting. Mr. Horn, Mr. Paul Horn will be presenting that at the next meeting. So, that's included in your packet to allow you a little bit of time between now and then to become familiar with the document as it sits right now. It's waiting to review and final approval, once you're satisfied with it.
Ryan, can I just like to mention that there was a conversation with Mr. Horn today. I had asked for a report at the last meeting. He has stated that that report will be in our agenda packet on meeting of the 25th. And so, that's, I think, going to describe the issues that were outstanding and all of the issues that were raised at the work session that we've had some good conversation on. So, he'll explain to us how did that document have addressed those concerns, which I think is incredibly important. I also suggested that we get a red line versions, that we understand those changes. I'm not, I did not request that to be in a printed form, but in a PDF form, to help us understand where the document moved after we had a work session and a lot of commentary on it. So, we'll get that at the 25th.
Annual budget process continues along. These, this next year's budget, we've been meeting with staff who have been discussing their proposed, staff departments discussing their proposed, proposed budgets to this point. The, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of, the long process I've described before is kind of a meeting in the middle. On one side, you kind of have, kind of have staff, you know, being, being quite optimistic in terms of the things that they're asking for. And of course, I'm kind of always nervous about the amount of revenue that we do or don't receive at this time of year for the upcoming year. So, so that's a lot of the muted discussions at this point. We look forward to wrapping that up and discussing that with, with you further as well. Retreat, I'm sure budget-related issues will come up at that scheduled for March 28th. And again, that's at 9:00 AM. As we've talked about before, it's gonna focus on updates from the last year as well as future planning for the upcoming year and years with departments. And we're anticipating, we'll actually be provided with that. That's gonna be here at Town Hall. The tree protection workshop for the, the Chatham Park Plan Development District Additional Element is scheduled for March 18th, 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. Just wanna double check, is it, it is 6:00 PM, correct? Everybody has it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, looking forward to that. Again, that's a workshop. So, had slightly, slightly less intensive issues. The kiosk, the third and final one, or at least the final one so far, has been, has been installed behind the, I thought I got a picture of it here, has been installed behind the admin building, the county admin building. I took a picture of it on a flyby this afternoon. It's not a great shot anyway, I guess. But if you drive by, you can see it. It's probably one of the only kind. You're gonna see no postings. And I think utility pools all over town are thankful to Mayor Perry for her work on saving utility pools and this issue. I think that, I think we've seen, knocking on wood again, I think we've seen our last instances of that happening, have any complaints about it.
All you have to do is go to Carvero and just be amazed at what they send us, the phone calls over there.
Yeah, right. And then also, I wanna extend, it's not often, it's not often, I, I probably mentioned someone's certification. All of those do happen from time to time, but I agree with you remark that Heather Mitchmore, Finance Director, did receive a certification from the Government Finance Officers Association. That's essentially the standard for professional certifications for finance officers. And I'm very, very proud for, for completing that long process. And of course, like any certification, players work to maintain. So, well done on that, Heather. Just a schedule, we had talked last meeting about the, that in bicycle plan timeline. You have that here in this slide. We talked, I don't know if we talked much about it, about the kickoff meeting itself, the last meeting, but that was held last week. And you can see the schedule for upcoming meetings. And we're looking to wrap that up by December of this calendar year. Then you have updates on, on other town projects and the coming up. We'll also have, again, we discussed the March 25th meeting, the master, Parks and Rec Master Plan, but we'll also be discussing the special events ordinance that, that looks at how we actually go about permitting special events like the one that we had approved or the process that we had approved in our, in the session this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to try to address those now or if we can wait till later.
Any questions from the rest of the staff? All right. Another question, who is back. The pedestrian and bicycle plans, are generally, are those made with NAN? Will that be tested?
I haven't, I haven't heard that. I can let you know.
All right, thank you.
All right. During the month, we've had a 3M tour of their facility in South of Town. 3M is very proud of the fact that they, of course, were the first industry in our area that infuses reuse water. And so Jay Bet and I and various members of the Economic Development Group enjoyed our tour of the facility. So that was very interesting and very much a pleasure. Are there any other meetings and updates that commissioners need to give with respect to meetings through the last, the last meeting?
Well, I'll mention that, and I think everyone probably saw this in the newspaper, but if not, that Alyssa Byrd is now the President of the EDC. She was a staff member and then stepped into the role as acting. She's been confirmed to the presidency, so I think will, that gives her the opportunity to hire more staff because she needs help and will be unable to do that much with that. So I think that'll be good progress. I will be missing the PBA meeting this Wednesday. I asked the mayor to, if she could attend at my stead, and she has agreed. I'm missing that, that meeting because I'll be in Salisbury at the Main Street Conference. So that's my update on the Main Street.
Other reports? All right. First item of old business then is the portable housing committee update with agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's been a while since I came before you. I think the last time we presented the recommendations that we had come up with and you all approved the setup of a portable housing board and began work on 501(c)(3). So we've continued to meet since then as an interim portable housing board, and we are preparing the materials for both the nonprofit and the 501(c)(3). And I have met with Coons, Wooton, and Haywood on that process and determined exactly what it is that we're going to need in terms of documentation and paperwork in order to get that 501(c)(3) through. We have also engaged a consultant to take our recommendations and put those recommendations into ordinance language. And that is going on at our last meeting, some discussion about that. And on the 26th of this month, we are to receive a draft of the ordinance language. We will meet on April the 2nd as an interim portable housing board and go through that draft of the ordinance language. And then depending upon how much change needs to be made to that, we'll begin the process of coordinating and consulting with town staff and then setting up the schedule of when we would be bringing that material to you. And so things are moving along quite well. We also had the opportunity to meet with a portable housing developer at one of our most recent meetings, and it was very informative. We continue to gather information from the people that have been doing this all over the state and the southeast for some time, and we believe we're on the right track. So I just wanted to give you an update as, as to where we're at and what's ahead of us. So I think the, the next big thing for us is to get the draft language in, in the ordinance and then begin discussions of that with, as I say, staff and set up a schedule and bring it to you. Be happy to answer any questions or anything like that that you might have. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And new business, we have sewer allocation requests update.
Good evening. We have before us a request from Modern Deli, also under the mod, for an expansion that they're doing. They have had an upset that has been submitted in the zoning compliance process, requires that they update their sewer allocation request. And so we have taken into account their existing, that the space they're expanding into the existing use that was there and what the expanded need is. And so the request is 392 GPD. And anytime we've had one of these come in for a new request, we've been trying to make sure we keep you guys informed about where we are tracking. And so I wanted to share that about 24,000 GPD remaining if we use the 90% rule as our guide for sewer allocation with paper flow, things that we've got accounted for on paper. So to kind of give you a little bit of an update, a lot of this information is very similar to what I presented last time. I do have plans for us to talk a little bit more boldly about it, broadly about it at the retreat at the end of the month. But to kind of walk through what we've got so far is that the permitted flow, this is what our plant is permitted for, is a 750,000 GPD. The annual average flow that we are operating with is the 2017 number. We have not moved to the 2018 information just yet. So 405,041 GPD is the number for that. The permitted flow not yet tributary, you see that number, so it brings us to a total paper flow of 456,108. That is the amount that is on paper. We have projects that have come in since then that have been permitted or allocated and permitted, and that is the portion that we talk about from this point forward. So the capacity that we use as the threshold, the 80 and 90% rule is based off of this number, the actual flow at the plant. But we use it off of this and our allocation that we do at the board. So you know, we are being clearly under the 30% rule, which is where we're going to be, where we're supposed to be day, with the annual average flow. And we've been monitoring the 2018 information as well. But we use the 80 and 90% rules as our guide going forward as we're making decisions and making sure we're tracking with expansion plans in line with additional requests. So this is kind of a pulse on the guidance, the guidelines that we are keeping under. So if we were trying to, or with the 80% number, we have about 143,000 GPD remaining. If we start proceeding a little further with our expansion plans, we probably will have closer to 218,000. The committed allocations we have to date is 194,884. That, to be clear, is some of that has actually been permitted since 2017, some of it has been absorbed into actual flow at this point, but that is the number we use for the point of calculations. So at this point, if we were using the 80% rule for our guidance, we've exceeded that. If we use the 90% rule for our paper decision, allocation decisions, we have about 24,000 I wanted to give kind of just a little bit of a couple other points that are good to consider. The town is actively working on the line to Sanford. Couple of things, the permits for that are still pending, have not been obtained yet. And so the start of construction is not yet known. Until we have the permits in hand, we can't really establish what that start date for construction. So we don't know exactly when that will be brought online. Once that is brought online, there is adjustments we will need to make of new ability to disperse that sewer needs between the whole 2MGD capacity that that line will carry. With the current allocation process, we bring before you requests just like this. An applicant sent us a letter, an engineer letter with their request. As long as their project remains current and they either build or stay current in our process, that allocation remains on the books. If their project expires, which there is a process and a timeline for when projects expire, that allocation is also reverted back. There's only a few situations that are exceptional to that where there was payment made in exchange for allocation, but those are becoming very few at this point. We monitor kind of the pulse on that. The, for example, we have one project that's coming up for, been a little, almost a year at this point. And so we will look at, are they planning on extending their request for a plant approval extension? If they do, that will come before you and make a decision about whether or not you want to approve that extension along with their sewer request at that time. I do want to just be sure that you're aware of the fact we are constantly getting new requests. And so this is the list of letters I have to date that have not yet come before you. So for a general magnitude, it's about 53,000 GPD. There's projects mostly that are under review that have not made their way to the board. The only one that had made its way before you was Mosaic, and it was a commercial subdivision. And so we've been working with them of when is the right time. They're under construction drawing reviews, so we likely will be bringing that before you soon. So I will take any questions. That's a lot of information, I know. But the request before you right now is a 392 GPD request, and with the remaining 24,000, under that 90% rule, staff has recommended approval.
Questions from the rest of the staff?
Thank you so much, Elizabeth. The memo, some sort of...
The 53 versus the 80, that was a previous number with a different mosaic calculation before they had requested reduction. And so I am sorry for that error. I did not go back and update that number when I fixed the table. But the 53 on the screen is the correct amount for all of those totaled together. Thank you.
And which, where does 53 apply? Does it apply to the 24,000 GPD that you mentioned earlier?
Yes, it would be, if we were to, so we've got the request right now for about 300, so it's a little bit over 53, but when we add it all together, it would cause us to exceed the 90% guidance that we've been using kind of as our threshold to measure against. We would not be out of compliance with state requirements as long as our plant does not exceed the 80% average annual day calculation. So that's an annual calculation that they observe at the plant. There is nothing that keeps us from going over 100%. These are good guidance thresholds to use as our barometer of how far we, we want to move forward until we have other options for expansion.
And so those other options are, right now, when we demonstrate contracts or significant progress, whatever that may be defined as, on this force main Sanford, we are able to go to the 90%. And then after that, it would be the establishment of operations, the events road plan.
We would have the 2MGD that we'd be operating with at that time, once the Sanford line is in place. But yes, then we would be working off of thresholds associated with that 2MGD capacity. And as we breach the limits of that, then we would need to look at another plant option or another sewer option for addressing our sewer needs.
Yeah, this is still very confusing, you know. Looking forward to a graphical presentation.
We hopefully can talk a little bit more about it at the retreat about some options and decisions of how, how do we weigh this at this time? All this is still, a few things are still such pending stage. Any other questions?
Other questions?
I just have one question. Which one did you indicate had reduced? You were talking about the, these additional requests total 53,000, which one?
It was an 83 number, 83.
Reduced it's in...
53.
So which one in, beloved is there in that?
Oh, the one that, so it is correct, the chart's correct.
Oh, okay.
The total will be on it.
The total was in there. Okay, all right. Just a quick question, thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you for explaining the nuances of tributary flow, paper flow, and permitted flow, all of that. And, and explaining that projects can expire, and when they do, that that allocation expires as well and comes back to towns, coffers if you will. On a project such as this, that doesn't have a site plan, has a building permit, has a zoning compliance certificate, certification, how does the town know when this comes online to take it from paper flow to tributary flow?
It's a little bit tricky in all fairness. The ones that do not tie straight to a permit don't have as big of a trigger when we move it. When we update and move from the 2017 average annual day to the 2018, that is a time that we would probably reconcile anything that's come online during that period of time. And it just, it's absorbed in what the actual flow is that's received at the plant. And so some of that, receiving back any extra would happen in that process. It is not an exact process for single family homes requesting it or businesses like this that are just a service. If it's an extension permit, then we have a permit in hand that they request a specific amount, and, and we use that kind of as our guide until they build out. But yes.
And it seems to me that in other situations, you issue oneself a water meter would be a, a trigger possibly to say that business or that house or whatever is no longer on paper, is now actually functioning, and we can take it off of the paper.
Until we do the update of the average annual day, the actual flow received at the plant, I don't want to remove it in the way we account it. It's got to be accounted for in one of the two places. So until we update that, and we don't generally do that every once a year. So we're, we're going to update it here shortly. We just have not gotten to that.
Yeah. See, I'm, I'm looking at it as critical to getting it off of the paper. And if it's not on the paper, there's only one other place it can be, and that's tributary, right? So we would, you're right that the numbers, you won't balance the tributary, but it seems fair and safe to take it off the paper. Water meter issued, the house is functioning.
So this information is done about once a year. This number is not updated.
Not once a year.
About. So every time we update that, absolutely what you just suggested would affect us, that all these things that are active, active businesses, homes that are built, coming off the paper because we know they're being absorbed into the actual what the course of...
Yeah, and I only suggest, I think that's a completely reasonable way to do it when there is an uncomfortable amount of flow, but when there is a very limited flow, we're looking at it from a paper perspective, I think it would be appropriate to take it off of the paper sooner, knowing that the business is functioning and therefore flow is happening. I'm not suggesting it not be a...
I can look at how many currently are of that type of nature. There's, it's pretty easy for me to tell which ones don't have permits or those smaller kind of amounts and they add up fast.
Yeah.
And see kind of what, what they're looking at. We're also hopefully soon going to be shifting over, although this will be a year that it's not going to work as smoothly in our favor because it's been a very wet year. So that number will probably be a little higher than we have seen incrementally with the rainfall. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess the decision that is needed is, it's a request for 392 GPD.
I'd like my commotion to approve sewer allocation.
Second? Moved by Jay Carroll, seconded by Bat Wilson, Foley, goes in paper please, and you get my saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Question carries.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, this is new business, number two, an ordinance meant town, because our code of ordinance is to allow alcohol on public property during special events. Paul Miller will be speaking to us on this.
Madam Mayor, the town's had ordinances in place for many, many, many years that prohibit the open display and possession and consumption of malt beverages and unferthed wine on public streets, sidewalks, et cetera. With the discussion about special events at your last meeting, there was some question about being able to use malt beverages and unferthed wine in the right way of Hillsborough Street. And so in order to keep yourself from having to violate your own ordinance, this proposed amendment is suggested. It, of course, assumes that there's going to be some kind of rules with regard to special events, and hopefully that can be at your next meeting.
I'd be very curious to hear Chief Percy's thoughts.
I've been discussing with Mr. Messick on it when this issue came up about these events and permits asking about consume since our town ordinance violated. Obviously, I had to tell him what the ordinance said. Mr. Messick said this is the best remedy. We've also been in contact with the State ABC Commission, gotten some information, and I haven't got anything contradictory to what Mr. Messick's advised so far, so. But without amending the ordinance, obviously, you know, I can't sit there and say, yes, you can consume Malcock beverages on the town street or sidewalk. Probably be in violation of ordinance.
Even if this is adopted, just, as someone who is to serve for possess or display malt beverages or unferthed wine, still got to have an ABC permit?
Yeah, they stop give a special use permit from the state as an extension of their ABC license or separate, separate use of permit, and those are regulated by the State ABC Commission, and then they have to give a law enforcement notification to the police department. The only question I'd want to know is, you know, whatever permit process, like Mr. Messick said, y'all come up with in the upcoming weeks, is it something that you let Mr. Mess, I mean, Mr. Grusby, just go ahead and approve, or is it going to have to come through y'all every time, which could get to be obviously kind of haphazard? But that'll be for them to decide.
I'm also curious, Mr. Messick, I think you, I heard you mention your rules, the applicant would need to put their word, did you hear that, right? Or...
I think you make the rules and the applicant agrees to the rules.
Okay.
And hopefully that will be available for you next week, next time.
Very good.
And this would cover not just special events, but also is it our street fair in October and the, is first Sunday covered with malt beverage being offered in tents over by the Capital Bank Building? Is that, would that be?
Yeah. This would cover it all out. I'm not sure how that's been allowed in advance.
And those last events, Mayor, if I may, those have been on private property, and they were under their ABC permits. That's why when we actually purchased where the town hall is now, when it was privately owned by Mr. Justice, he allowed them to use it under their ABC permits. When we owned it, became town property, I should tell them they couldn't put the beer garden there anymore because of the town ordinance. And so the other, these other events, if you've seen them, they've actually had them on private property, which was allowed under the state laws, and they weren't violating the town ordinance. And there are occasions someone didn't know the rules and wandered off into the street or sidewalk. We just told them, you need to return to the designated drinking area. You know, we're not trying to be heavy-handed about it.
But you haven't had any problems with people being drunk and disorderly on...
Well, at every event, you're going to get the occasional person that gets out of hand. So, I mean, it hasn't been anything like a Roadhouse, but no. But that can happen at any event, and that can happen even if they're not serving Malcock at that event, you can have someone show up.
Thank you.
So that document also would, that put a definition of what a special, what constitutes a special event?
Good question. Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I can second about Bat Wilson Foley. Does some paper please, and you get my saying aye?
Aye.
Does opposed? Question carries.
I do have one additional question in reference to that. So I know that we'll hopefully indicate with special events, but then obviously it should be a discretion of the board that whether or not we want to consider that as a special event and allow beer and wine to be consumed, such as the street fair. I don't know if that would be a good idea or not. You have children, so that can come, become a problem. Children, beer and wine, that just wouldn't be quite acceptable, at least to me.
Oh, I understand. You will note this fiscal policy is attached to your package tonight for review and the parks, as already Mr. Grusby indicated, the parks recreation plan, they've been included as well. I'll be ready for Commissioner Siskel and Stan.
I have one question for Brian, the whole fiscal policy. Is this the same document that was, I think, presented with a date on it of March 23, 2017? Scoured through our old stuff, I think I found it in the April 10, 2017 meeting, had had that March 23 date. This one now has a March 5, 2019 date, so it's one of the same.
It's substantially the same, if not exactly the same. That's why we looked at it before and think we wanted to mark off it, and we just never got, never got, never got on the same page with it, to make that happen.
Would you mind marking if it's the same? That'll be helpful for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Siskel and Stan, Jay Farrell will be in to us starting the meeting.
Thank you. I have just one thing regarding this amendment. Is this just going to be to vendors only, or is it going to be included to downtown businesses?
That's the other side.
So, okay. So we're just really approving the sale of alcohol? You're not just being handled, I guess that's what I'm trying to ask, but how is it we handling this?
Well, you haven't handled it because you haven't had it before.
We just passed the resolution.
It just says that it's not against the law in the event of a special event to possess and consume mixed, I mean, all beverages or unferthed wine.
Okay.
Sitting on the patch drinking a beverage maybe is not special, though.
Yes, some people...
I know.
That's what I was doing.
That's right. We don't have anything else.
I have an issue in that I am supposed to be out of the country on April 8 through 13. And I'm very concerned that the tree protection vote that happens that Monday, because I would be missing, maybe the eighth. So I'm trying to get a sense of when that vote might be placed. I know it's difficult to say for sure. I'm looking into changing my tickets, but I think it brings up an issue that has come up before, and that is if there is a board member who cannot be present, do we want to make it possible for that person to tune into meetings from afar? And that would be a good discussion before we have. Would you all talk about that, whether we...
Tune in is one thing, participate is another.
So we'd be able to go necessarily, would it?
Well, you could tune it in, which just means you'd have telephonic communication, you could listen. But if you want to participate, then I think the board's got to decide what kind of parameters are that is, you know, allowed for that.
And we'd have to establish policy in front. And school board does have a policy currently that allows for telephone remote participation by school board members and voting. And have that policy, I'd be happy to circulate it.
Is that something that the board would be wanting to clear? And not just for me, but just for future situations where one of us needs to be on the town. Not a setting, you're going to sit on your couch and...
I think it's a very good idea. I think, I would hope and assume that when we have full capabilities in the new town hall, that we have that capacity within. But I think that we can do something in the meantime, because I'm recalling the Parks workshop where we had consultants on the phone, and that worked perfectly fine. He could hear us, and we could hear him, so.
Yeah, I think you can circulate that policy. I think I was in a meeting when Dell was absent, participated with you.
Yes. All right, I'll circulate that.
So we have one meeting before you be leaving, so we need to put that on the agenda for the second meeting in March.
I'll circulate immediately, and Mr. Messick.
I know maybe I'll be able to change my climate, but I still think it's something that we want to look at, just not just, not a specialty for me, but just trying to consider.
I do have one issue, well, it may be more than one issue. There are several potholes on Channel Street, so I was wondering if those could be repaired, or would you wait until the season, you know, the rainy season is a little left?
Yeah, we'll probably repair them now and with Patch, and then, you know, something I did mention, we're doing a pavement analysis, if not right now, for the next week or so. Yeah, so...
Old town?
Yes. We did one about five years ago.
Excellent.
And so that kind of helps us prioritize what we, what we pay. But that's kind of fallen under the repairing category. We'll just go ahead and repair those, and we'll deal with the longer-term solution once we've got a little more data.
Okay, so really bad. Patch not sunny, I'm sure, is when you go down the hill.
Oh, that hill, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon, so some of each house too.
On a very much related note, East Salisbury Street, I'm very glad to hear that there's a, a review going on, because there are, I think there's some need for attention on this Salisbury Street over there. With the pits, and I understand you've been in touch with local property owners about water issue there, some infiltration that's getting into the Phoenix Bay Creek. I don't want to push you on the spot, but if you could give a presentation or update at some point, not necessarily now, I think you were, you were just keep pursuing the guy.
I did, but we can start to go for that way.
I did the damage.
You did.
Yeah.
Didn't find any...
Yeah. And I'm understanding that the gas station management has had the fuel service provider company come in and pump out that sump several times, and they're not finding anywhere near as much water as they used to find. But they does repairs flowing into that sump. So that doesn't mean the problem has gone away, and indeed, the water is still leaking into the building. And my concern here is very simple. If, if it could possibly be our water main causing problems to a property owner, wet brick is not a good thing. And it's a, it's an old building, it's a fine building, and I hope that we could try to eliminate all possibilities or see what more, what's more stones we can overturn.
Yeah, it's going to be pretty easy to conclude that it's not a water main. We're not receiving any, we're not having any drops in pressure anywhere nearby or anything that would indicate that there's a leak that substantial that would cause that much water to infiltrate the main. And no, it's worth the time to investigate it.
We've not heard anything else from the property owners since we started having the gas station pump off the water, so that's another thing. There's still concerns.
Yes.
It has not made its way back to me with concerns, so. I mean, John Paty's been watching it and keeping an eye on it, but we've also had a lot of wet days, but it's not as prevalent to see what may be going on.
Yeah. Well, it's striking because the only thing that has changed is the foundation of that in 4R Mark last year. And it's not a rainfall.
And you're not a rainfall.
I think there've been wet years before, but, okay, so also really curious to hear about an update on the drinking water treatment study in the CDM Smith. I think when we got that presentation, that was six-week estimate, do we know? Are we still on track with that, or are we expecting that coming?
Probably we are. I did not check, I just get all that from the...
That's all right.
But it is progressing through the process, and they moved that particular piece of the schedule, so it is.
I think we're looking at April for that.
I think it was April.
Thank you. And just before the meeting, I circulated a proposal from the North County State University Clean Energy Technology Center to do a very small piece of analysis considering the cost of the payback period, economics for solar, and energy storage at our town hall. And I just wanted to call that temporary intention, and that we want to think about that, perhaps in a senior or a mayor, whatever the question is, if you could also express interest in that.
Yes, absolutely. Very interested in solar being used there at the new, at the new town hall. So let me take a look at this, and is there any analysis that's been done by Hobbs with respect to this, or?
No, they haven't gotten into those details yet, but pretty early in the schematic design, but, you know, obviously you guys are aware that there is a commitment of, I don't want to, I don't want to confuse the terminology, but lead or leadlight certification with the building, so I think this is a good fit of that, one way or another.
And I've also been approached by citizens concerned about, I'm not sure quite how to word this because I don't have the language I'm trying to explain, but certain about, certain federal policies and potential impacts on law enforcement here in our community, on community relations, and on businesses, in that our community is a diverse community, partially ethnically, and there is something, this so-called state of emergency, and some other statements that have been made that are very much denigrating people in our community that are valuable citizens and valuable participants in the economy when they're not citizens. And I just wanted to let folks know on the board that this very much concerns me and worries me emotionally as, as a community, and I would like to share a draft resolution with sentiment from this board, and I would love to get your feedback on any timeline you wish. I don't want to rush the issue, but I'll be circulating that after this meeting as well. I'd love to have the folks get put on such a statement of upholding power, believing in the importance of civil rights and the importance of defending our national security and our borders while also upholding human rights and civil rights. Thank you for having me, and I'll share that with us. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to also say that as we go along here, it's not going to be long before we are faced again with speakers on agenda items. I expect the concrete plant will be one of those. And I circulated an email earlier today that dealt with the kinds of things that we might want to consider, whether we want to consider a shorter time period for overall remarks for people who will carry forward to the next one, whether we want to limit the number of speakers to, to one meeting or the other. We're not required by law to have speakers at both our monthly meetings. We're not required by law to have speakers at both our monthly meetings, but if we wish to do so, we could say that we will have public expression speakers on the first meeting of the month or the second meeting of the month and not do both of them. There are other opportunities for input by giving copies to, to the town clerk so that she can incorporate them into the minutes and that we would have the opportunity to do those even if they weren't spoken. So those are things that we probably need to think about before we get the next flow of speakers on items that are on the agenda. There will be no public expression during the tree workshop that we are going to be having upcoming because the workshop is exactly what we have said is for us to gain the benefit from the in-depth study and that is for us and so we will not be having speakers at that stage. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Oh, wait, I was thinking we might discuss this.
Oh, okay.
Because I think that we might have it because of the interim, we might need to flesh out what consensus this board is, Mr. Grues. It seems to me that in my three plus years on this board, as we've discussed this a half dozen times, instead of my email, the shape and nature of how we allow public comment and we've always operated on the consensus from the board, come to a agreement and complete and it seems really conspicuous that we would change the rules this level of time. And I think if we're going to do that, then we need to get a little bit of that and have an advance notice.
What does it want to change?
I think what I'm hearing is, is a change for question of whether or not issues that are on the agenda are up for discussion.
Yeah, and so up until probably two years ago, my previous seven years on the board, it was the board's policy that we just did not do that, it was the board's time to deliberate and take action. So we have, making the last couple of years, made exceptions on occasion, not always. So honestly, I'm one who feels as though it's inappropriate to have speakers on an item because I think that is a time for us to deliberate and then put in a position to make decisions on that level of effort. And so it's up to us to deliberate, the man versus the board, so I have zero objection for having speakers. I was not on the agenda, I support having speakers at any meeting. I do support having a time limit, I think that's helpful. I think thirty minutes per meeting, three minutes per, so that would allow for ten speakers. I think it would be good if we also had a policy that said if there were multiple speakers that were required to have new information, that we just didn't have the same information over and over again. And that's, that is the way it happened on this board from then on, it was my decision.
I have a different view of that. I'd say when I was on the board, I'd say also when it was on the agenda, people couldn't speak about it. And I can somewhat understand that, I think there's already been a public hearing, but there's a lot of issues that come up, but there is no public hearing and it may be the only chance that people have to speak. I personally would really like hearing from the public as long as there is, it could go on and on, like I've seen it go up to midnight now, we're doing P D, P D D or nothing. But I personally don't like the idea of saying that people can't speak if something's on the agenda. I do think it's reasonable to say maybe someone that's spoken at the previous meeting is maybe to not just say the same things over again and giving other people a chance to speak, but I do think if we don't set a time limit, that it could get, it could take hours sometimes. I find it safer allowing things on the agenda to be talked about, but no.
Yes, so.
I do, I do. Actually, that has been the, that was the policy for years and years, you cannot speak on anything that was on the agenda until very recently where we sometimes had an exception. However, I prefer not for, we should give people the opportunity to speak at either one of both meetings, I have no problem with that. But if it is on the agenda, I think that there are examples to have spoken on that before, so I would prefer not to hear that if it's on the agenda, they should have addressed it prior to that time. Now, again, the time, there should be a time limit, but I don't have a problem with the same people speaking over and over again on the same topic, I don't have a problem with that at both meetings.
Yeah, I think that we're a small town and that's one of the best ways that we can manage issues and to keep them from blowing out in proportion is to allow people to have that expression. And I think disallowing it during the session in which it might be irrelevant, item on the agenda is, is not, I think it's constructive, I think it's, I think the ideal situation is allowing folks to have their say within rules and within bounds and it sounds like we're already consensus for a time limit and that might mean some people who sign up don't get to speak. If we're going three minutes per person or then we'd have to contemplate cutting it down proportionally, you get two minutes, thirty seconds, so on and so forth. Yeah, I just think that it's, it's always better to let folks have their say because when they felt hurt, then we're more likely to have a lot of problems together. And constraining that five days on whatever's on the agenda is, is going to put a great dramatic damper on that. Again, as Commissioner Foley said, there's a lot of issues that do come up that don't have prior notice or the notice was not well distributed through the town despite our efforts.
Can you give a thought?
Yeah, pretty much, I feel the same way, Beth, but I feel like if anybody spends time to come down here and sit through numerous minutes or hours, either whether it's on the agenda or not, I like to hear. Within reason, time-wise, of course.
I think it's interesting, the last meeting, we, it was almost eleven o'clock before we, or after eleven, when we left, and the first hour was consumed by speakers about the trees. Most of those speakers had already eaten. And so, so my sense was that we were not hearing something that we hadn't heard before, but if we all read our emails, but the fact is that, you know, out of a three-hour meeting for the first hour to be consumed, you know, I thought it that opens the possibility for looking again at our comments. But since everybody seems to, from my sense of what everybody's saying, you can speak at post-meeting and within a time limit, an overall time limit as well as a three-minute individual time limit. And as to whether the item is on the agenda, it appears that you're somewhat split. So, so would it be proper then to ask for the next agenda to contain an amendment to our ordinance regarding public speakers that the public is invited to speak at either of the two meetings and that we would commit to one half hour of comment and that anybody can not get a chance to speak, which is very urgent.
But they're not saying that public hearings aren't, there's no to have in our motion to have a group.
Oh, no, I'm just talking about citizen amendments. They do think that both meetings, they want to. Yes, but not either, but, but yeah. I'm not hearing objections, I'm not hearing anybody say we should only have speakers at one meeting. And that the time limit, thirty minutes, is that what you think is appropriate?
That's a number. We seem to do all right with it tonight.
Yeah. It's not a few people going a little bit longer, but, you know.
Mayor Gray, and Mr. Baldwin, I would like to express appreciation for what both of you have done in the past in terms of maintaining decorum in the meeting and asking, making moderate requests of the public in how they deliver their comments. I do think that's very important, I think that kind of leadership is very important and appreciated and I hope it continues. And remember our next player is, I hope that that kind of continues the same way because I think it is important that we set the ground rules, any formal capacity for stability and, and trying to avoid information or redundancy. We don't want to hear much as protective. Yeah, the other protective thing.
On that note, I just want to say sometimes it is interesting to see that there are a lot of people that feel a certain way, so to me it doesn't necessarily have to be new information as much as it is just seeing that a lot of people share these same feelings.
It was important.
All right. Can I ask you to adjourn?
Are you talking about the main or?